Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and welcome you to the Fruita City Council meeting. The time is now seven P M. And we're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Mr. Bremen.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Cry.
Present.
Counselor Miller. And Counselor Hansi is excused absent.
All right, we're going to move into our second item, which is moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand with us. We'd like to take a moment to allow all face and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one change to the agenda. We're adding a proclamation under section four. It'll be section item four B. It's a proclamation for Martin Luther King Junior Day. But that is the the only change to the agenda. I would like to note that Counselor Hansi is actually present online with us.
Hello, good morning or evening.
All right, thank you. All right, so we've got that one change. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. So we have two proclamations tonight. Our first one is proclaiming January twenty twenty-three as National Crime Stoppers Month, and I've asked James to read that for us.
Whereas crime is a menace to our society, it tears apart lives and causes feelings of fear, anger, and helplessness. As caring citizens, we are obligated to do everything in our power to ensure that our communities are not victimized by criminals. And whereas the Crime Stoppers of Mesa County program has empowered the citizens of Mesa County to take a stand against crime. The program brings together citizens, law enforcement, the media, businesses, and educational institutions to combat crime and make our communities safer. And whereas combining a media awareness, cash rewards, and an anonymous phone tip line and P three tip tips app for citizens to contact Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has created an effective method for solving crimes and helping citizens take back control over their neighborhoods. And whereas the award-winning nationally recognized Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has been particularly effective and since nineteen eighty-three has received over twenty-two thousand tips, which have led to eighteen hundred and fifty arrests and the recovery of over nine million, two hundred thousand dollars in drugs and property. Anonymous Crime Stopper callers have been rewarded three hundred fifteen thousand dollars for their valuable information. And whereas Crime Stoppers of Mesa County has forged strong working relationships with all area law enforcement agencies, including Colorado State Patrol, Fruit of Police Department, Grand Junction Police Department, Mesa County Sheriff's Office, Mesa County District Attorney's Office, and the Palisade Police Department. And whereas Crime Stoppers of Mesa County is working to increase awareness of community safety issues and crime prevention efforts while also giving back to our community by offering grants to various organizations, partnership with Colorado Mesa University, and scholarships to law enforcement graduates. Now therefore, in official recognition, we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-three as a National Crime Stoppers Month in the city of Fruita and call on all citizens to increase their participation in our effort to prevent crime thereby strengthening the communities in which we live.
All right, I think we've got Rich Parish here and some board members from Crime Stoppers. Would you like to come up and say a few words? You have like half the audience.
Wow. It hardly seems possible, but it's been a year since I stood and thank you for recognizing Crime Stoppers in our organization. There are some new faces that I'm seeing up there, but some old ones. And
Well, I'm okay with that. Sorry, I used the wrong word.
We know what you meant.
We do very much appreciate the cooperation of the Police Department here in Fruita and the citizens of Fruita in our efforts to solve crimes that are sometimes not ever solved unless we get tips in. And so over the years that I've been associated with the program, we have proven to be very effective. I want to recognize tonight Sherri Zen, who was recognized at the National Crime Stoppers Convention as Board Member of the Year. And we also received recognition Bruce Hill and Superior Alarm was recognized as a partner, community partner of the year because of his participation as a sponsor of our annual golf tournament, which now is in its thirty thirty-seventh year of our soul, essentially soul fundraising activity. But we, again, thank you for recognition again in January. We're happy to be here and to participate with you and your organizations.
Well, thank you. Come on up.
Yeah, congratulations. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
You gotta get a photo. I don't know. The old faces.
All right, and our second proclamation is proclaiming Monday, January twenty, or January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and Ken is going to read that one for us.
Whereas that all people, regardless of the color of their skin, the persuasion of their theology, or the level of their intelligence, were built by one creator with one blood, designed in fashion to live on earth with one another. And whereas Martin Luther King Junior was a minister who dedicated his life for this purpose, so we may, as Americans truly live out the Declaration of Independence, as we hold these truths to be self-evident that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the third Monday of each January be acknowledged as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Fruita as a city holiday and day to acknowledge a great American who awakened a nation's conscience to not judge a person by the color of their skin, but by the content of their heart. And whereas every year in the week leading up to Martin Luther King Junior Day, several events are held within the Grand Valley Communities to not only honor Martin Luther King Junior, but also to educate and build stronger ties. And whereas in cooperation with the city of Grand Junction, several events are planned to commemorate Martin Luther King Junior Day on January sixteenth. Now therefore be resolved that the Fruita City Council does hereby proclaim Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three as Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Fruita and encourages the citizens of Fruita to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs that honor the memory and legacy of Dr. King.
All right, I know we've got David Combs, and we've got Eric here from Black Citizens and Friends. Would you like, guys like to come up and say a few words?
First, we want to thank you for accommodating us. We talked a little bit about Grand Junction calendars and also the city of Grand Junction while we were doing this, but it had no relationship to this. The the holidays literally got in our way. Typically, we know that we can count on you for this proclamation. And and it's huge for us. It's it's enormous for the valley. Our theme this year is develop the courage to stand up for yourself and others. And I think we all know that it takes more courage to stand up for someone else than it does yourself. I think all of you who are on the dais and you, sir, probably were backed by someone who said we need you to stand for us. And that's one of the things that Dr. King stood for. You mentioned in the proclamation for individuals to go out and get involved, and this holiday has always been a day on rather than a day off. It's a national holiday, and we have always implored individuals to either come out and join us for some of our events or do something for your neighbor, something that's that's not necessarily out of the order, but just something. So you can say, I had the day off, but I did something. One of the things that we're doing this year in Fruita, we're bringing more to Fruita. We have a a neighbor's read at the library, and basically it will occur January eleventh. I think that is Wednesday at six P M. At the library, and we read stories about Dr. King to young kids in the library. We typically have done this at the Central Library in Grand Junction, and we've talked to the librarian who's always said, we want more in Fruita. There's something that you can do for us in terms of bringing Fruita to us. Another event that we have is it's and it's and and express yourself event, and it's held at Charlie Dwellington's on Friday. And we know there's somebody up there who is entertainment-y acclimated. I'm not going to say who or point anyone, but if you want to come out and represent Fruita.
I would be honored, except for I'll be in Indiana.
Oh, dang.
Any other time, babe, I would happily jump.
Okay, but and and in all honor, in all honesty, we want to thank you because every year you're one of our first proclamation readers. And we appreciate that. We can't, we we cannot express how we can't express how much this means to us. Everything happens in junction, and everyone knows that. We somewhat live and die by junction. However, what we as a group try to do is is spread this word around. We have a proclamation reading in Palisade. We have a a Sunday. If you're not doing anything for brunch on Sunday, we have a a Sunday brunch at the Clifton Hall, and that's our Clifton tie-in. We have our Monday event that will happen downtown at the City Hall, and then we'll march to C M U after and have our final event Monday evening. So we have something or try to have something for everyone to be involved to just get a little taste of what Dr. King stood for. I want to introduce a couple of our committee members. I have Eric Ward, who is our treasurer, and I have Rebel McClary, who is, he does a lot of our media for us. And if either one of you gentlemen would like to speak.
Yeah. No, um, this is a really great proclamation for me to hear. I actually grew up in Fruita. I was a I went to Shellody Elementary and Fruita Middle School and graduated from Fruita Monument back in two thousand nine. And you know, just, you know, growing up here, you know, there being me and only a couple other black students, you know, and just, you know, but people still embrace me here. I still had friends, you know, but I still did experience, you know, you know, racism and discrimination, but you know, how things have changed since since I've grown up. And then just the continuing push for inclusivity and equity in this community is so great to see, and thank you guys for continuing to carry on that that tradition. So appreciate that.
I want to say thanks for you guys to to read the proclamation and everything. For me, it's a it's a personal thing just from the fruit aside, because I'm a I'm born and raised in Chicago. So and if anybody knows anything about Chicago, they have really good pizza. You guys have some really good pizza. And when I run into people, I totally unsolicited, when I say that I live in Grand Junction, they talk about Fruita, they talk about Fruita being a Viking capital of the of the world, which is. So that gives me some cool points with some extreme writers, you know, when they say, oh, you know, you're from Grand Junction, they've been to Fruita. I'm like, yeah, you know, it's a cool place to hang out, you know, get a pizza, you know, and get a beer and everything over at Hot Tomato. So I want to say thanks because it's kind of cool to be living in Grand Junction, but to be close to a a really cool part of Colorado.
If people, if we would like to share your events, is their website, I I'm on Facebook, Black Citizens and Friends, is that the best place to?
That's one of our social media points of disseminating information and also our webpage, blackcitizensandfriends.com.
Okay, thanks.
So there's two places there. And if you desire, I can always bring you back a poster. So, cool.
Okay.
All right, and any other question? Well, thank you very much. Come on up and.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to wedding. I'm not sure my wife's dragging me.
For being here. Thanks for coming. Thanks for all you do.
We have to come up front again?
See, we're just doing what we're told. That's all.
I just didn't want to stand next to Matt. It makes you look bad.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. So generally, the city council will not take any action on these items. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're going to close public participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. They'll all be approved by one motion. So we're going to open up the consent agenda to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda, now would be your opportunity. Sarah, you seen anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, I'll close that for public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Mr. Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, tonight, we do not have any public hearings, so we're going to move into our administrative agenda. And so our first item is our Fruita Building Division. So we've got our Planning and Development Director, Dan Carrots, presenting.
When they started, it's like when I, I don't.
Are you commenting on my shirt?
No, I figured it out now. I was just.
Represent.
Missing your plaid tonight.
Yeah. Been a tough, it's been a tough few weeks. My wife's been on winter break and lost all sense of decency in our household.
I'm, again, just for the record, Dan Caris, Planning Director for the city of Fruita. One of the things that I wanted to start off with is is just mentioning that we've we've had a tremendously successful recruitment for our three positions. We had budgeted two point seven five F T Es for the twenty twenty-three budget for the building division. We elected to start the recruitment early, just considering the fact that it's a fairly difficult labor market, and it's not like there's a robust amount of qualified individuals that are on the western part of the states that would be interested in applying for kind of maybe these new, these new positions or have the credentials to do so. So as the council recalls, we had a chief building official solicited. We solicited I C C, which is the International Code Council, and the Western Colorado Code Professionals and and had a number of applicants. We conducted interviews with five or six internal folks to the city and then industry panels. So we had Brad Keller, who is I believe a vice president of the corporate office for F C I Constructors, Charlie Gecter, who is the president and founder of Boa Builders, which is a group that has done quite a bit of work in the community. They developed the neighborhood directly to the west of the new elementary school. And we had Patrick Hummel, who's a design professional. He's a licensed architect with Chamberlain, Kayla Brown with Chamber of Commerce here locally, and Travis Holder, who's the fire marshal for Lower Valley. So that was our industry panel. And after deliberation and and interviewing both candidates, we elected to go with John Anderson. John Anderson is probably just five, maybe thirty years of experience. He's been a building official in a number of jurisdictions. He came from the California area. He's used to be a plans examiner and a commercial inspector for Orange County and for the city of North Las Vegas as well. This is pretty robust experience. I've known John for about ten years. Like, he's total code professional. He's a a great guy. I think that will be really well-served by him. One of the elements within the building department or building division inspection profession is credentialing through I C C, which is where they go and get all of their certifications to be qualified to actually review and inspect facilities that run the gamut. John has about thirteen of those of those certifications, which is an awful lot. Usually, people have far fewer than that. The the second hire that we made was a gentleman by the name of Mike Mossberg. Mike was the building official for Mesa County prior to Daryl Bay being the building official. He's again, you know, a thirty-year veteran, like, it's really important to us to make sure that we get all as much experience as we possibly can right off the bat. Both of those, both of those code professionals are able to do commercial plan reviews, hospitals, schools, you know, qualified to do the gamut. But as any many communities in Colorado have have recently had to comply with state law that passed in two thousand and nineteen, beginning to force fully January one of two thousand and twenty-two, which is that if you are going to inspect electrical facilities, you have to be a journeyman or a master electrician. So we had to, because you cannot inspect those, even if.
Sherri really likes you.
Yeah. Knock it out of the park. So so we solicited for an electrical inspector. We did receive a number of people being interested, but interviewed one candidate that we felt was really qualified to do so, and and her name is Jen Wooton. She is a journeyman electrician. She's lives in Fruita. She's got a great disposition. She'll be a great addition to the team and and certainly like the future, you know, and would is going to represent us incredibly well. So in the last sixty days, like, we held a recruitment for three positions and have have on-boarded those folks, at least partially. They, the two gentlemen start next Monday, and then Jen starts next Wednesday. And so Mike Mossberg is going to work in a in a part-time capacity for the time being, just to make sure that, like, we have all the redundancies put in place and that we can use him specifically in like plan review or actually being assigned to like, let's just say, like a multifamily building or like a school remodel, but think we're going to kind of use that position to assign them to like the plans for said permit and then for the inspections outside of, of course, the electrical stuff. Which brings me to this. This is the landing page that we've started to put together. It has our permitting software and some how-to videos on how to submit for building permits and how to request inspections. It also has some state mandated elements that have to be on the website, which is specifically the state electrical and plumbing licenses. We're required by the state to have those certifications for plumbing and the electrical licenses assigned to the jurisdiction of authority. And so that's essentially the jurisdiction that has the capability of doing those inspections. Why this is important is that although we were recently exploring the idea of with Mesa County of trying to phase this in, just so we could have a soft landing with maybe smaller projects, maybe pay a little bit more attention to those that are going to last for a long time, just so we're mindful of their time and their resources. Unfortunately, with the state electrical board and the state plumbing board, we can't have multiple jurisdictions doing plumbing and electrical inspections in a jurisdiction. We also cannot have us partially doing some inspections and them doing, let's just say, for example, like electrical inspections in a facility. There is kind of a of a break, you know, between those two, which is part of the reason why we've had a lot of dialogue back and forth with the county about what would be the best way to implement this and implement it well. And I want to just say, like, Daryl, who's the building official at Mesa, he's been the consummate professional throughout all of this. He's been really respectful of of the records that we need and really respectful, I think, of of making sure that neither jurisdiction is a part of any clunkiness as we as we move into this this space as a as a organization. And so with that, we've we've talked kind of back and forth about when do we go live? Our contract says ninety days, but ninety days lands on on March twenty-eighth, per the letter that we sent to the county notifying them that we are going to bring building inspections in-house. That will be a tougher transition for us if we wait until then, because, you know, when it comes to going vertical or doing any utility work, that is when batch plants open up, asphalt starts to become available. So that will be a rough transition, and Daryl shares in that sentiment, and I think that their department, their organization shares in that sentiment as well. So we've we've talked back and forth about trying to do it sometime in the in the maybe middle of of Q one. So the date that keeps to come, keeps coming to mind is is February twentieth. Part of the reason that that is a kind of a date that we're zeroing it, zeroing in on is that the way that it conventionally works is a lot of people go through their entitlements during the winter because you can't build, right? And then they apply for their permits and the beginning of the year, and then they go vertical in the spring. And so that sort of February, you know, middle Q one, late Q one timeline is is probably going to be the least disruptive where we don't have plans that have been fully reviewed at Mesa County and then permits being issued because of state regulations that would indicate they would have to go back through a plan review. So there is no state mandate with regards to plan review, so we can do those without being a jurisdiction of record for plumbing and electrical. And so Daryl and I have been working closely right now on what those projects are going to be and how we can get like in communication with applications if they started the plan review with Mesa County, how far they are into it. And so we've we've really had a lot of dialogue, probably talked maybe half a dozen times in the last couple of weeks, just trying to make sure that this is put together well and is done very professionally. So I just wanted to draw attention to to that. That's partially one of the reasons why the the ninety days isn't necessarily going to be the the gospel, so to speak, on on when we go live. But we also want to make sure that we're But we also want to make sure that we're as communicative as possible with the building community. The best way to do that, though, is that we control the planning clearances and those are essentially like the ticket to take to the building department to get a building permit. So we have like the first point of contact, so we'll be able to communicate with people as closely as possible. And then additionally, any of these big projects that are going to be twelve months, eighteen months, you know, it makes no sense for Mesa County's operation. To have to continue to make trips into Fruta when they would probably choose to deploy their resources in a different fashion. We, we do have a meeting with the HPA and WCCA on January eleventh. And are probably going to be doing some energy code training late January, early February. And also host for the, the software application. If, a, a, and totally at your, at, at your pleasure if you wish, but I think that the, the cloud permit platform for. How to submit and how to call for inspections, pretty slick operation. It's fully incorporated now with our assessors website. So. We've got the parcel tax ID numbers. We've got. All of the areas geocoded where there's applications presently. It, it really is going to take people through the entire process from the pre-application meeting when it's like, hey, I want to start a business all the way to like. I'm opening my business day one. So we're really proud of it. It's, it's going to be incredibly helpful for us. Much like our press release and other communication is illustrated, we are adopting the exact same codes that the county has. And adopting the same fee schedule. So it's, it's essentially a carbon copy. There'll be no change of price. I do believe that we'll probably offer a, a, a really quality service, just considering the fact that we've got a smaller geographic. Region to cover. So that's. That's essentially the scoop right now as we're at. We're obviously. Have kind of articulated that April, May was going to be a timeline that we were shooting for, but we were pretty successful with recruitment. And so. It's kind of where, why we're pivoting at this point, but a lot of moving parts, just trying to make sure you take one step at a time. With that, I didn't ask any questions.
I have one question for you. So I know you're, we're talking about like some of these twelve and eighteen month projects. How many of those do we have on the books right now? That are still going to sit out there for a while with Mesa County?
So a good example is like the Mesa and Mulberry apartment buildings. There's no way, even if we passed some date, some fictitious date. That we would then start doing those inspections. Those have already fully come out of the ground. But there are nuances like, you know, sign permits that need electrical, solar with new electric gear. So there are some nuances where we might actually inspect some of those facilities, but not the buildings themselves. The ones that are going through the site plan process will be Fruta inspecting them because they're not going to come out of the ground until. You know, the late March, early April timeframe. So I, I would say we, we have the car barn redevelopment. The tenant improvements that are within the farm. The Muse, any and all mechanical, uh, uh, electric gear upgrades for the schools. So, so there are some lasting type of work where there's, you know. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty inspections per, per facility. I'd say the most complicated is probably going to be the multifamily at the car barn. The Muse is essentially a series of ten, ten buildings with five units apiece. They're, they're not separated. As, as their own parcels, so they're built at an occupancy that's very similar to a duplex with just a one hour firewall. So those aren't going to be as complicated, but it'll be a lot of trips out there. So I would say, you know, probably like four or five.
Hey Dan, do you want to share maybe the example of a subdivision that's being built currently? So there's some houses already built. But there's more to come and how that transitions.
Sure. Yeah. So the. With, trying to think of it like Orchard Ridge, you know, seventy-five percent of those buildings will be. Reviewed, permitted and inspected by Mesa County, but any past February twentieth would be reviewed. Issued and then inspected by. The, the way that we're planning on handling it, which is straight out of the contract with Mesa County is that if you have your plans approved and your. And your permits ready to pick up, a hundred and eighty days after February twentieth. That those essentially have to go through the jurisdiction of control or the jurisdiction of record with the state. And so those could be lingering though. And that's why Daryl and I talked about putting together a letter. That's going to be sent out to all those permits that are outstanding in Fruta this week. So they know they can go pick those permits up before February twentieth and have just no difference in level of service. There will be many applicants though, i- i- because you can drop your building plans and your permit information before you have a planning clearance. There will be ones where it's a, a utility upgrade or a trench inspection, where they will likely just come under. The city of Fruta anyways, but if they've got their building plans for like, maybe like the next home in Iron Wheel. Or the next home in, in Orchard Ridge, they will have the option throughout the next forty-ish days to go under. Mesa County or, or Fruta.
Couple of questions for you, Dan. So does John Anderson, is he going to be reporting to you? Is that how the structure is going to work?
Correct.
And then you were talking about how Mike Mossberg was part-time for a bit. Are we going, do we need to expect an amendment to the budget? With having quality hires earlier than expected, just with like the two, seven, five FTEs in the budget. Are we going to? Still hold to that or do we expect to have an amendment to the budget to? I believe for more salaries.
I don't believe so on the salary front. We've, we, we did the math with math with Odette. And with, with Shannon, I do believe so though with the FTE count. Because that will change since, and she's not a three-quarter part-time employee, she's just working sixteen to twenty hours a week. But no request for additional, additional staff or additional salaries for the staff that we hired.
Thank you.
How are you feeling? The reception will be since it's going to be a few months sooner than what we had originally planned.
I think that the contractors, especially the subcontractors know the rules, like they know that the state has specific certification requirements for plumbing. And just to straight up, you have to have a journeyman or a master electrician license for electrical. So I think they will get it. Just because like they don't want somebody that has a subservient amount of knowledge inspecting their facilities or make sure it's like for like. I do think that this is the, the most respectful and that I, many of the folks in the industry that I've talked to understand that this is. Both a show of respect and cooperation between both the jurisdictions that we don't. Essentially have them going into facilities that are going to be under construction for a year plus into our jurisdiction. Especially as they're trying to probably figure out how they're going to deploy their resources. So I think many of the, the general. Contractors out there will get that. I, I think it's all going to be about process and they're, they're going to want to know. There's a thousand questions out there about. How the plan reviews are going to be done. What's the interpretations for this, that and the other thing? And so it's really just getting as much face time as we possibly can with people. But I, I, I think we'll be fine. I really do. None of the larger projects that we've talked to at this particular point in time. Have had any reservations whatsoever. All they ha, all they've requested is to have some face time with our staff.
Fantastic. Are we going to have like a host, like a, but yeah, I think that would be a really smart thing to do. And also I'm thrilled to hear that Jen is our, we got Jen. I am very familiar with, with her and she's, that's.
She's superstar for sure.
She's fantastic. She's going to be a really good fit.
Where, where are we housing them? I know that we're, we're hurting for office space. I'm just curious to where the building division is going to be at. Were we able to pull that off pretty decently? Office and all that stuff like that that they need.
So we do have a, our Chamberlain put together plans for, I think what we're calling phase one. Of the improvements to the civic center. Essentially the, where the dance studio is presently will be where the building inspectors. Are going to reside. And then there's a, a interior remodel where the storage facilities are that are on the north side of the building. Essentially just right to the east of, of Mike's office. And so those will take care of, I think, our most immediate needs with regards to that. But as you, as you recall, there was plans to do the entire building that obviously would be fairly disruptive and. And I think that, you know, this, this seems to serve our needs. Kind of most immediately, but also it's in consideration of the larger project too. So it's not like we're spending money. That's not going to benefit us in the future.
Do we have a, a window of time? So like they start Monday. Do we, we have temporary place for them to be and then we're going to move them there? And then my only other question, and will that be, have we figured out where we're moving the dance classes to? We had talked about moving to the rec center. Is that? And is that going to happen? So that those kids still have that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, they've, they've already moved. So.
Okay, good.
They finished off the year, I guess you could say, here. And then they had scheduled all the future ones beginning this year at the community center.
It's probably better for them there anyways, isn't it?
Those conversations happen.
I think the, really good questions because we're, if you remember, right before the holidays, we opened a couple bids and one of them was for this building. And we're under a contract. We are narrowing down the schedule and it's about a, just under three months. Is what their, the, the planned schedule is. So it is going to be a little disruptive while we're, because even the spaces that are not being constructed. Right next to them will be hard to work next to. So you may see in, in the next few months, beginning a little bit later in January. For, for about three months, like we, we may have some things happening like this curtain. This is a, or not curtain, but this wall may be pulled over. This might be a little smaller for a couple of meetings because we might have some people back here temporarily. We, we might have some people doing a little bit of virtual work. At times. Fortunately, during COVID, we did all of the above. We had the building closed. We worked virtually. We moved around. While it's not ideal for a few month period, we'll be able to work, work through it. And, and we should have that schedule early next week of kind of what we're, what we're, when it actually, the project kicks off, but. Because they'll do the demo of both sides, even, you know, they'll come in and demo both and then they'll come in and start doing the. One of the construction, one thing on that, on that project, we. As Dan said, we wanted it to, to mirror the future plan. So we're not redoing anything. One of the things we did to save money at first was we were looking at not having normal ceilings on those offices, which isn't. The most ideal when you have some space above below. But Chamberlain was able to be really creative and actually came down and we were within. That same budget, they're going to bring the ceilings down, but we're not having to redo all the HVAC. So there will essentially be a ceiling on each of those new offices. But without going through the, the, the large expense of, of redoing. Now I'm out of my element and all the construction, but anyway, we're excited for that. So it'll be good and more. But anyway, we'll, we'll get that going.
It'll be nice and comfortable.
Yeah.
We, we want to roll these guys out.
Right. As far as equipment, vehicles have been on order. We have some that we're working out of how, how to, how to utilize some that are rolling out. As we're waiting for vehicles to come in, because that's been a difficult thing. We ordered early because that's been such a long lag time. We have their computer equipment already. We have, you know, other minor equipment and we're going to be doing some musical chairs to give them spaces. To work too. I see Dan on the table and that, so people are in, be in his office at times, getting ready for things like that. So. But it'll be temporary.
Into Deb's and help share that big old. Good on over, Deb. I love that Deb has that office.
I, I, yeah, I think that the space, I mean, we've got to remember too, like, once this gets started, like, you know, they, they do not, it's not a, a, your, your traditional desk job.
Sure.
So they're out.
Right.
It's, it's unique that, you know, the, the county's process has somewhat evolved ever since COVID with the fact that like they, they start their day. Like when their truck gets turned on rather than like having to go particularly in the office. So might do a little bit of that and. And, you know, we also have to remember it's going to be just disruptive in general because like we'll be building something and. So that, that I, I think we'll just have to work with it, but just still try to maintain, you know, a presence at the counter because we do have. A steady stream of people that come in.
Yeah, I want to stop for it. Go ahead. No, go ahead. When is the new software kicking?
Our, we had a soft launch today. It was very soft. At, at three o'clock. So we're for the building department stuff. So we're.
Like four hours ago. So where are we at?
Yeah. We're, actually, we're, we're really pretty far along. I mean, the company that we're working with, it's, I mean, I've done this a couple of times. With permitting software for specifically for land use related elements. And sometimes it can be pretty clunky, but. This group, I mean, like they're in contact with the state about the online payments. They've got all the. Kind of the connected to the assessors website for all the plots that are recorded and all the tax parcel ID numbers that are assigned and. It's, it's pretty robust. Like they know what they're doing. They're a Canadian company that has kind of marketed themselves as being. Full suite. So, you know, code enforcement, short-term rentals, business licenses, land use related applications. And then building department services. So, so they got it down. There's some really slick things in there about how to communicate with applicants. I think it'll be really appropriate to show that to the, to the council when we have like some actual applications in there where they're. Where they're calling for inspections, but there's ways to directly communicate with people within, inside of the, inside of the software application. Where you're trying to just get an info, get some information from, let's just say like the fire protection district or get some information from our city engineer. Or upload a document and it's kind of like a chat function. And it's become really popular in this space because you go out for inspections. Nobody likes to just be told, hey, like the anchor bolts are wrong on this foundation. And like, they like to know like where at, you know, is it, you know, in the northwest corner of the building, like is it a distance issue like? Like what, what do I need to do? And that's like a true correction notice function that, that I think will kind of personalize. And the really unique thing about that is that it doesn't require them to log into the application each time. Every single time there's a notification and folks can customize this. It just sends them an email every time. So if Henry opens a, let's just say he's doing like a residential site plan and in conjunction with like Mike. And they're reviewing a architectural set plus like the setbacks and like the building height and all of that. When Henry opens that for review, it timestamps it and they get an application like he started your review. So we can run queries on like. Is it taken us five days to get through plans? Is it taking us thirty days to get through plans and generate those reports? And send them out, just so people know like how quickly we're responding. And, and then has the robustness of being able to have that dialogue when there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen. Like you water and the fire district and us and, you know, I mean, lots of people interacting with an application. So I'm, I'm excited about that because we do that basically by phone and by email and you, you do lose some things in translation by, by operating like that. So this will. Consolidated all.
So the soft lunch was today.
Three.
At three. And then when do we think we'll be past the soft lunch and? We up and functioning?
By February first, by February first, all the, all the land use applications are going online. We'll probably be very, uh, approach that with a lot of grace. You know, there'll be a lot of people that this will be an adjustment just because it's a technology adjustment. So we'll probably help out. And, but, but a hundred percent of it's going to be, because that's, that's how it, that's the strength. If it, if it all is in there. You can't just be the building permit because then people are trying to look for stuff from like the, the subdivision. So it has to all.
I get it. It needs to be a central repository.
Are you gonna, are you gonna offer some like in-person trainings for? I can think of some specific. That, that, that might be beneficial for that wouldn't, I'm, you know, the videos are going to be great, but just. Maybe a few opportunities to be like, hey, you know, come to this one hour class.
Yeah. So, so we, those are the, the canned, how to submit a building permit and how to request inspections are canned on their website. We've also been like taping all of our trainings ourselves with them. So we're going to dump them. It's just kind of like our repository of. Of all the questions that we've had that applicants will likely have as well. And then of course, like we will, you know. Do the training, I think, in an individual setting after like a pre-application meeting where like they want to get signed up as a. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure out kind of unique ways. We do have a lot of repeat customers here. So I feel pretty good that like. Even if we talk to one, like, let's just say like architectural designer or one like civil engineer, like I think we'll kind of be talking to a lot of other people too. Like I think we'll kind of be talking to a lot of other people too. Uh, but the ones that, that, uh, that I'm the most concerned about is, is, uh, just the people that interact twice a year. You know, like they're not gonna remember when there's six months in between. So we gotta make sure that we, we, uh, knock that out of the park.
Dan, I had a question. So like for, you're saying for state electrical and plumbing, you have to have a licensed inspector. Is there contingency for contracting that out? Got somebody that's gonna take vacation time, have sick time, and we have deadlines, I think, on when people call an inspection. So is there contingency for those type of scenarios since we don't have people in that?
So we, for, we have two to do the plumbing. So Mike and, and John are both certified, uh, to do the plumbing inspections. So they don't have to have a state, have to have a journeyman or a master license for plumbing. But you do have to be certified with the, the International Code Council.
Okay.
But you have to be a journeyman and a master electrician. Which is part of the reason why we, uh, have decided to, uh, go part-time as needed with, uh, with Mike Mossberg is that many communities do have duplicative backups for electrical inspections. Uh, it's just that the state won't do them. The state either does all the electrical inspections or they do none. And so once we're established and we have a license and we have Jen's journeyman license to essentially, uh, give to the state. The, they will ask like, well, what is plan B, you know, if out for, like you said, vacation? And a lot of communities, a good one is, is Delta, where they have a, a commercial installer that is a master electrician that for a, a dollar amount does the inspections if they need to pick it up for a day. So there's lots of examples of how to do that. That's, uh, likely the, the path that we will proceed, uh, in, uh, of, uh, having a, uh, another.
Okay.
So that's still someone that I have to be identified at this point or people.
Yeah, I mean, we felt like that, like Jen should probably be part, probably be a part of that conversation and, uh, and, yeah, I mean, I think that like there, there are relationships out, out there in that, in that universe. And, and, uh, I think it's also just, you know, busyness too. You know, some contractors would not be, or installers would not be able to have the same day service. But, uh, but it's, it's a proven, that's, that's a proven model. People use that a lot in lieu of having the state just do all the electrical inspections.
Any other questions for Dan?
I just, I've got unsolicited feedback that you made some good choices on the, the staff. So pass them along.
Will do.
I just wanna say great job on rolling this out as quickly and I don't wanna jinx it, but it's seamless. It's been pretty smooth. You guys are getting on it pretty quick and handling it. Thank you.
You bet. It's not something you do every year or something you'd want to do.
Oh, but it's great. I mean, you guys are really doing a great job of rolling it out properly, because we get one chance to really do it right. Especially with something this big and this having this big of an effect.
Being the first.
Valley, we're being very cautious about it and, and we're being very, uh, honoring to the other people that were involved. So I really appreciate the ways that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan. All right. With that, we're gonna move into our public safety update. We've got our chief of police, Dave Kraus here. He's in the casual mode too. Coming out.
Mayor and counsel, I appreciate the opportunity to come, uh, give you a little bit of, uh, brief update regarding, uh, police operations. Uh, starting with a review of, um, some accomplishments and things that occurred in, in, uh, twenty twenty-two. And then, uh, looking forward into twenty twenty-three, some things we have, uh, planned, some challenges we may face. So in twenty twenty-two, some of the notable, uh, events that occurred for us was our continued implementation of the body cameras. Uh, we did receive a grant from the state of Colorado to cover our twenty twenty-two implementation costs. And it also allowed for us to, um, expand our hardware. We originally started out, uh, somewhat modest, and so we weren't, um, equipped to give every officer, uh, body cam to begin with. And knowing that we were going to phase the program in, but the grant allowed us to, um, expand our hardware as far as cameras and charging stations and other related equipment, such that we could equip each officer into, with a body cam and, and also have a couple of backups, uh, in the event that we had one go down for one reason or another. We also, uh, through the ga, grant, were able to expand our data storage. Um, we started out again pretty modestly with our data storage needs, yeah, um, our estimated data storage needs and found that we were probably, um, we probably underestimated those needs. So we also expanded our data storage. As far as the body cameras go, the data storage and management is probably going to continue to be, um, one of our primary um, issues to be monitored, um, not only the, the data requirements, um, as far as volume of video, but also the, uh, release procedures for court purposes and, um, public information records releases that require some redaction and other manipulation of the data. So, um, we, we, it hasn't been overly burdensome, burdensome yet, um, but we're continuing to monitor that and that the impacts that that may have. Also, in twenty twenty-two is our first full year of implementation for our Lexipol, uh, policy and training system. We transitioned from our old, uh, policies, uh, that had been updated, but, um, we're not, uh, probably as sophisticated as they could have been. Um, so we updated to a Lexipol system, which is a multi-state, uh, organization that, uh, monitors things like um, case law, uh, best practices and automatically then updates our policies for us to review and implement. And so that's been great. Uh, we have somewhere around four hundred plus pages of policy for the police department. Um, and we have fully implemented those, posted them on our website. And then in addition to the initial review that we expect of all of our personnel on the policies, we've also conducted over eighty trainings, uh, on the policy that are also produced by Lexipol and, uh, sent out to us to then distribute to our personnel, uh, to ensure continued education on our policy. Uh, in, uh, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, we also continued our implementation of legislatively mandated reporting requirements. Some of those include, uh, increased use of force reporting and demographic reporting to the state. Uh, specific documentation and reporting on the use of field showups and procedures. Field showup would be, an example would be if we were to contact someone who was identified as a suspect in the area of a crime. And then we were to ask a victim or witness to identify that person on the side of the road. There are very specific procedures that we have to follow and then report on in order to make sure that we're doing that in the most unbiased and unpartial way possible. And that, uh, again, is legislatively mandated and we have to report how we go about doing that. And we also have to report, uh, our, our overdose responses to the district attorney's office, who then has to report them to the state. And, um, we had been, because the legislation that required our demographic reporting uh, to start occurring before the state was required to develop a system for us to report it to them. Uh, we had been collecting that data manually, um, on contact cards and storing that data on spreadsheets. And then, um, the state said, we don't need that data, but from this point forward, we need your data. So, um, we actually transitioned to a free, uh, mobile application that allows officers on the scene of a contact to record that data on the application and it reports to the state. So it's, uh, made that process much easier, much more efficient for our officers. We also had some personnel changes in twenty twenty-two. We started out the year fully staffed, which, um, is not something a lot of law enforcement agencies can say these days. So we're very happy about that. Stayed fully staffed throughout the year for the most part. Uh, we did have Sergeant Kevin Paquette retire, uh, in the spring of twenty twenty-two, but knowing that was coming, we had an applicant in the process and were able to bring him on, uh, very quickly to fill that vacancy. And that retirement also created some promotional opportunities for us internally. So we ended up promoting Clem Rodriguez to sergeant, which, uh, Clem had been a corporal. So then we promoted, uh, James Queen to corporal. James had been a detective. So then we, uh, assigned Chad Cersei as our new detective. So some good, uh, career development opportunities and movement um, for our agency that especially in the, the, the ranks doesn't happen super frequently because our personnel tend to stay around and especially our personnel of rank. So that was, uh, some good opportunities, certainly a loss, um, with all of Kevin's knowledge and experience. But, um, otherwise good opportunities for a lot of our existing personnel as well. And then just to conclude, twenty twenty-two, uh, quick review, end of year calls for service from the Grand Junction Regional Communication Center. In twenty twenty-two, uh, we covered, we handled eight thousand six hundred ninety-five calls for service. In, uh, twenty twenty-one, we handled eight thousand four hundred seventy-eight. So that accounts for a three percent increase in our calls for service. And of course, that always begs the question, why was there a three percent increase in calls for service? And, um, the simple answer is I don't know. But, uh, in addition to, um, increases in citizen-generated calls for service, um, I think we can also attribute that to some degree to late in the year. We started, uh, accounting for officers' time differently and started to encourage more accurate um, reporting of how they were spending their time. So for example, uh, an officer may have previously gone to, um, talk to a business owner and hadn't logged that in our computed, computer-assisted, uh, dispatching system. So it would have showed them as not having been engaged in an activity, uh, not having any, um, been engaged in a committed activity at all. So, um, we really encourage them to, to more accurately account for that time. And I think that increased, um, not only our calls for service, but then our self, self-initiated activities like our traffic stops and our, um, business checks and those sorts of things as well.
Chief, the other question I know, because you didn't, you don't have that number up there is, what's like our average time for when a call comes in to act? This, the response time for that?
Yeah, our response times are pretty good. Um, actually, our, uh, our, uh, priority. So there's different priorities of calls for service, uh, priority.
Fireworks call.
That would be a while.
Be like three days now.
Yeah, the, uh, so it starts with a priority three would be the lowest priority, uh, call for service, which would be like a, uh, car break that happened overnight, but no, no suspect information, no real urgency, um, to the call. That would be categorized by dispatch as a priority three. And given if there were other, uh, more pressing calls, then that kind of a call would hold. So that would be a longer response time for something like that. Priority two is more of a intermediate type, um, call for service, like, uh, maybe a suspicious person in a neighborhood or at a business. Uh, that requires a little bit more of an immediate response, but isn't something urgent that's life-threatening or an immediate, um, threat to a property. Uh, and then, uh, priority one, uh, would be the immediate responses necessary. So an assault, uh, domestic violence case, something like that. And for our, uh, priority one calls, uh, they measure the call creation to dispatch time and then also the dispatch to arrival time. And so as you would imagine, the call creation to arrival time is a little bit longer because it takes the dispatcher some time to process the information they're getting and given, and then translate it to us, uh, to dispatch us. Um, and then, so what I really look at is the call, uh, the dispatch to arrival time. And for priority ones, we're typically in the average three to five minute, um, response time for those. Uh, looking ahead to twenty twenty-three, um, some things that we will be facing, uh, some staffing, uh, issues going into the year. We currently have two vacancies, one created by a recent resignation by one of our officers who is moving on to, uh, um, pursue opportunities in another industry. And then, uh, one that is the new position that city council approved for us for twenty twenty-three. So thank you for that. Uh, we do expect also one more, um, vacancy based upon, uh, one of our officers planning a retirement in the spring. Um, but he also, um, says he's gonna retire every other day. So we'll see. We'll hang on to him as long as we can, but, uh, I think he's serious this time that he's going to retire in spring. So, uh, we'll have one more vacancy probably around then. Um, the, the good news is we get to bring in some new perspectives and some new blood into the agency. The bad news is we don't have a lot of prospects right now, um, like every other law enforcement agency throughout the state and the nation. Uh, we aren't getting a lot of interest and a lot of applications. So we're continuing to work on that and hope that, um, we do get some interest. Um, frankly, we're, we're pretty picky about who we choose to. There's been times in the past that we've had applicants that could do the job and were qualified, but we just didn't feel like we're a fit for our community and our agency. So, um, we're very cognizant of making sure we bring the right person in that's gonna serve our community the right way. So, um, we will take our time that we need to make sure we find that right person. But at the same time, we're hoping to get those vacancies filled as quickly as possible. We also have our, uh, reaccreditation due for the Colorado Association, Association of Chiefs of Police. And so that's due this year. So we'll be working on that. Uh, certainly not a complicated process, but it can be quite time-consuming. And what it involves is, um, comparing our policies and practices, um, to the standards established by C A C P that are based on state and nationwide best practices to make sure we're in compliance and in alignment with them. So we'll be going through that process. Another issue for twenty twenty-three is, or an area of focus, I guess I should say, is, uh, on outreach and, and engagement with our citizens, uh, which we, um, have talked about a lot. And one of the, um, reasons why we asked for the additional position this year was to be able to have dedicated personnel, uh, to engage in those activities. Um, so those could look like a number of different things, but, uh, we'll kind of be riding the bike as we build it with that, uh, particular program. But things we have in mind would be, uh, crime prevention programs and education programs. Um, variety of community events that we already do, but that we will expand, uh, National Night Out, uh, the Special Olympics Car Show, various, uh, coffee and events like that. And then, uh, the Faith in Blue Weekend, we've also been researching. It's an event that occurs in October. Um, also with Ciara's help, we've been working on increasing our social media presence and the utilization of the website to get information out. So she's been a great help with that and we continue to, or plan to continue to burden her with a lot of requests and a lot of, uh, asks for help with that kind of stuff. Uh, we also know that, uh, traffic is an increasing, uh, area of concern for the community. Uh, we'll continue to monitor that, uh, with increased residential and commercial growth, of course, means increased traffic volumes. So that also could possibly mean increased crashes and, uh, increased violations. So we'll continue to monitor that for our future needs and priorities. And, uh, we already, um, definitely engage in, uh, traffic enforcement and engage, uh, and engage with the, uh, the, uh, engineering department on, uh, discussions about traffic engineering. So we'll continue to do that, but we know that that'll continue to be a, a growing issue for our community as well. Uh, we're also going to continue, I mentioned earlier, that we've been working on better tracking our officers, how they spend their time and, and how they're committed. So we're gonna continue to work on ways to, to better track that. Um, one example would be, we approached, so i- in the county, we all use the same records management system, which is also our, uh, community, computer-aided dispatch system. And so we have a user group that makes decisions on changes to that system. And we've approached them with a request to create a new call type, um, that we're not quite sure what it's going to be called yet. But the intention is to track community-related events and activities so that we can, um, kind of monitor those activities separately from, uh, other activities officers engage in. And we don't currently have a means to do that in our system.
Don't add more right in the middle of it. Don't add more right in the middle of it.
I I was thinking about it, yeah. Uh some continuing challenges that we faced, but um that will continue in in twenty twenty three, no doubt. Like I mentioned, our staffing and recruitment, uh again statewide and nationwide issue that uh we'll be feeling, no doubt. Um and then um overall societal issues. And um these societal issues such as mental health, substance abuse, homelessness, they're all under inclined. And they're bigger than the police, uh but oftentimes we're the first ones to respond to those sorts of issues. And so we do our best to um do what we can to help mitigate those issues. So we'll continue to evaluate our role in those, um but also emphasize with our community partners that it needs to be, the solution needs to be bigger than uh law enforcement and the criminal justice system. That's not the right answer for these issues. So we will uh continue to to uh engage and partner with with our uh with those agencies to um address those issues. Um one uh area of interest, I know uh the council sometimes gets questions on is um the homelessness issue and particularly probably uh um like the homeless camps in the community. So just to talk um briefly about that, uh we do sometimes see an uptick um in town uh of uh individuals passing through and sometimes camps getting set up. So the way we um try to approach those is if we encounter a camp, um first we determine whether that is on private property, in which case we'd work with the property owner regarding any trespass or cleanup issues there. And then um also whether it's in the county or in in the city limits. And so if it's in the county, we work with the sheriff's office um and partner with them on, again, enforcing any trespass issues and then evaluating whether or not um some kind of a cleanup is needed for uh health and safety reasons. Um and if that is needed, rather whether on private property or um on county property or uh city property, the way we handle those is we will post the camp um at least for at least seventy-two hours, letting them know of the violations. For example, they're trespassing and then let them know that um they need to clear out their property. And if they don't, then after seventy-two-ish hours, um it may be considered abandoned property. Um but we'll we'll collect our, collect any valuables we find. If we do end up doing a cleanup, keep those and in that posting, let them know where they can come to get those if they're left behind. And on the posting also, we provide a listing of resources in the community uh for homelessness and other uh, you know, community resources for folks that are um living without a home. Um it's a, it's a bit of a touchy area with the cleanups and the camps because municipalities throughout the the country are facing litigation for disposing of property because they're making the determination as to whether it holds a value or not. And so um it's been it's been challenged and has yet to really be resolved uh through the court system as to what exactly uh is constitutional as far as when it comes to a municipal agency or even a county agency uh cleaning up properties like that and what's allowable and what's not. So we'll continue to monitor that and the outcome of some of that uh litigation. And that also goes with uh we'll be watching the uh county's recent camping prohibition closely. Um again, I know some of those types of ordinances have been attempted in other areas of the country and have been deemed unconstitutional. So um we hope that the county is successful in what they're trying to do, but um we'll be monitoring that to see um what steps we may take or not take in the future with that issue.
Hey Chief, can you, can you mention, um I know we had a question recently uh that we talked about with uh under the three forty bridge and that I think it's good to just clarify that that that's one of those, that's one of those examples that's typically visible where we might see a camp under there. It's not, that's county property. And so we coordinate with the sheriff's office. Um just like the chief already went through, so not to rehash that, but but um I know that's one that we've worked on recently and periodically, I should say, not just recently.
Yeah, whether it's that one or others, um that's a fairly common area for the camps to pop up. So we work with the county and we've addressed it in the past with certain individuals who are staying under there uh with the county's assistance.
Do the postings look like, is that like a sign or like, how does that, how is that implemented?
Yeah, so um uh we don't have to do it very often, but we do have an example of a a posting that is essentially a uh we use a colored paper, so it's obvious. And then it's just um like safety pinned or um clothes pinned onto some property there. Typically, there's a tent or a tarp or something to post it, and we try to post it in several areas of the camp to make it as visible as possible. Um finally, just um to revisit uh kind tying a lot of the issues together, um some things that impact our goals is just balancing the demands on officers' time. So between the staffing shortages, calls for serviced, uh the aforementioned reporting requirements, uh administrative duties related to body cams, uh technologies such as um pretty much every call we go on these days has either a cell phone or ring camera involved. So we're collecting that evidence and processing it. Um and then uh uh increasing training requirements seems like uh every year uh either the post board or the legisla- legislature is requiring more and more training of police officers, which is great. We are all about training. We want to train, but it does take officers off the street like a lot of these other things. And when the officers are off the street, they're not able to engage with the citizens or um engage in a lot of proactivity. So um we're continuing to try to balance those um demands to make sure that we're still uh providing the citizens uh the quality of service they deserve and and responding to um their requests for what they want their police department to do. I believe that is all I have for you, but I'd be happy, of course, to address any answers or questions or concerns you have.
Do you have an idea um what the majority of your calls are, like the top one or two?
I wish I did. Um I don't have statistical information. I can certainly get that, I think. Um and if so, I can include it in maybe a weekly update. Um anecdotally, I would say um the pri- uh most of the calls we respond to are quality-of-life type calls and crimes of opportunity. So quality-of-life type calls would be uh noise complaints, barking dogs, dogs at large, um fireworks, uh yeah, those sorts of things. Um and then crimes of opportunity, uh car break-ins, which often aren't car break-ins. There are people entering unlocked cars, um vandalisms, those sorts of uh crimes.
Do you have a sense of how often you get recurring from the same source calls?
We do. Um we track that and uh we, so we engage in problem-oriented policing. And so when we see an issue like that, we we know there are certain locations throughout town that tend to cause us and their neighbors the most problems. So we certainly make those a priority to try to address those issues associated with those places, um which is not always easy, but certainly uh an area where we we place our efforts.
Thank you. I have a follow-up purpose for those first two, which is I'm curious about your thoughts on um possibly at some date and time, having a social worker within in-house with you. All not going on initial calls, but like for those reoccurring or whatever and things that you already mentioned that aren't necessarily police, you know, really law enforcement, but somebody who could offer resources to these people to maybe eliminate the multiple occurrences from same sources and such things like that. Like what's just your general feeling about that kind of idea?
Oh, I think that's definitely the wave of the future. I know a lot of our um law enforcement agencies are going in that direction. Um even locally, I know the sheriff's office and Grand Junction Police Department are both employing uh clinicians or therapists uh to address those types of issues with them. I I'm not sure if our volume warrants it quite yet, but um certainly it's it's on my mind, it's on our mind as we discuss priorities um going forward. So I think it's definitely um it definitely has value, and I think it's uh something we certainly will consider in the future. Determining, I think we have to determine what's that threshold where it's um gonna be financially viable.
Great, thank you so much.
I wanted to, Chief, what you mentioned the the uh body cameras now and and the data storage and the management of that, I'm sure uh that's gotta be. What is it? How, do you have like a how long you have to keep information or how does that, how does that kind of play out?
I I can't give you specifics, but uh there is a retention schedule um that we follow. So um just, and please don't hold me to these numbers, but for example, uh just a routine contact and an officer may be on that doesn't result in any um charges or any uh for future court proceedings or anything like that, we'll hold it for thirty days, just in case something comes up about that particular contact. Um but then if it's uh longer than that, it will be um somewhat in um compliance with our evidence retention schedule as well, which is somewhat based upon the uh statute of limitations on crimes and then also court proceedings. And so we we don't dispose of any any evidence that's involved in a court proceeding without the district attorney's um disposition order.
The reason I ask that is it, because as we keep going year after year in, I mean, are you guys foreseeing that you're gonna need some additional um equipment or any, I mean?
Yeah, the way we currently are um housing data, it's uh through Axon, through our contract with Axon. So they technically house the data for us. So we don't actually have to provide any servers or anything like that.
The cloud.
It's in the cloud. However, that works, don't ask. Okay, it's out there somewhere.
Interview services environment, yes.
Yeah, that.
And now the only other question that I had in it, this is just kind of a um just for you, perfect world, you know, pie in the sky. Is there any nagging things in your department that drive you nuts? I I mean, I'm sure there are, but that that we could, yeah, right. I mean, or is there anything that you guys are lacking or or a constant thing that pops up that we could help you with or, you know what I mean? Is there any, anything that you guys are, that we could support you with that you're, that could be easily done for you?
I really appreciate the question. Um I think uh we definitely know that we enjoy great support from you all um and our administration as well. So uh I don't think we want for for much. If we need something, we ask for it, and if we're told no, that's okay, and we'll figure out a way to do without or to make it happen. Um but uh we're not very often told no. But we are, we do try to be responsible and conservative with what we request and make sure that we have some justification for that. I feel very strongly about if I come to you asking for additional positions, then I need to be able to justify why we need those and what we're going to do with them. And again, if, you know, if we go into two thousand twenty-four with three vacancies still, because we haven't been able to find officers to fill those vacancies, I'm not gonna come to you and ask for another position that to tie up more of our budget in a position that we can't fill. But um I do appreciate the question, but um I think all the support we get from you and the community is um gives us what we need.
I've got a kind of a two-part question. So how many officers do we have for school resource or dedicated as school resource officers right now?
We have two that are primary school resource officers.
Will the staffing affect that at all?
Potentially. Um that that tends to be one of the first places we draw from to fill patrol vacancies. Um we haven't had to do that yet. We've been able to um do other things to keep the SROs in our in our schools. We know how important that is. Um during the summertime, it gives us a little more flexibility with them since there's not school in session, but recently, it seems like with the way the school years go, that for about three weeks that there's not um doesn't give us quite as much time um flexibility. Uh but uh if we do have to go that route as we have in the past about pulling an SRO back into a strictly a patrol function, um we typically try to keep them on a shift where they can still service the schools since they're familiar with that uh day shift. Um and we also emphasize to the other day shift officers that they need to be more active in the school since we don't have that presence.
So then I guess another question. So our calls have been up from the call center by three percent. Do we see more student cases with our SRO officers in the schools? Have that number been going up too, like amount of need?
I, well, the, so the need maybe, but the cases I would say not. So we don't make a lot of criminal cases in the schools. Um but we do do a lot of intervention in the schools, and a lot of the cases that we have in the schools can be somewhat complicated um and time-consuming. Um for example, you know, the recent uh threat we had uh that thankfully turned out not to be much of a threat at the fruit of eight-nine school involved a lot of students, a lot of staff that needed interviews. And so it was quite time-consuming. Um but I know any as far as any referrals to the criminal justice system, um we tend to s- stay at the lowest level possible when it's appropriate. So if it's a case that's appropriate for diversion, we send it diversion so that the student doesn't end up with a criminal record of any kind. And as long as they comply with what they're supposed to comply with, then they don't have any kind of a criminal charge. So, yeah.
Thank you. From a recruitment standpoint, I know the state of Colorado has some of its own challenges. Locally, do we face additional challenges that are different than the rest of the state where we're kind of following in line?
Uh I think our challenge is locally is that the the pool from which to fish is fairly shallow, um unlike the metro area where there's a lot of agencies to that maybe officers wanna move from one agency to another for whatever reason. Um that's not necessarily the case here. We're all kind of competing for the same applicant pool. And so the Grand Junctions and Mesa Counties, Palisades and us are all, we're looking for the the same
candidates. As Pruda, we don't have any unique issues compared to.
No, I I mean, um I think we offer a lot, and I think if we are able to to kind of get our hooks in someone and explain what we have to offer, then um then oftentimes we can win them. Uh we have excellent benefits. We have an excellent work environment. We have excellent support and interaction with our community. And all of those are the kinds of things that we sell um to applicants when we're recruiting. And so I think um beyond challenges, I think we actually have a lot of opportunities that maybe applicants don't know if they're not familiar with us and our community.
Thank you. Another question related to what Matthew was asking, we'll keep you busy tonight. Is, is there like an ongoing, like if, do you have officers that approach you that wanna come here that you guys do like an ongoing type interview process?
Yeah, we.
I know we've talked about that quality of place or lifestyle here in Fruta, and we do get people from up in the county that wanna transfer out here. So
Sure.
That's something that you guys keep a pool of interest that you can contact.
We do. We never turn down an application if someone's interested, uh whether we have a vacancy or not, we'll keep it on file and we'll we're always talking to potential applicants. Um and sometimes we've heard in the past, well, I really would have liked to have come to work for Fruta, but you guys didn't have any vacancies at the time. And so they found another opportunity, but we definitely keep in touch with uh people who show interest. And um we uh, you know, if we, if we have someone that is interested in us, we're interested in them, and we end up with a vacancy, then we'll reach out to them and let them know.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? He's pretty good at ignoring barking dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
All right, well, thanks, Kraus. Appreciate the update. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year. Um couple of quick things. We have a reminder that the chamber after hours, the city is hosting uh the Fruta Chamber After Hours, not this Thursday, but the next Thursday on January twelfth from five thirty to seven o'clock at the Fruta Community Center. So we'll have food and we'll, we're looking at some trivia and some Fruta prizes for that night, and uh hopefully uh as many of you can make that. Um we did receive a an email today that the mayor and I were on. It's uh, we recently a few weeks ago, let you know that we received another uh Department of Local Affairs grant um for over six hundred thousand for the aeration project. A few weeks ago, let you know that we received another Department of Local Affairs grant um, for over six hundred thousand for the aeration project. In this year's budget. They need a letter signed by the um, either myself or the mayor, I I Kimberly thought it'd be good from from the mayor to make sure. And someone to bring that up. All the letter says is when they awarded us the grant. Um, they called us the town of Fruta. And they have to correct it, and the only way they can correct it um, for their state process is a letter from us saying. We accept the correction for the application, so um, I figured, I figured everybody'd be okay with that, but um, wanna make sure. Can sign it tonight and we can, we can send that.
Classified, by the way.
But appreciate that. I have that to get get your signature. The only one is kind of, you don't need to do anything on it tonight. But I wanted to plan it in um, for probably our next agenda to put on the agenda. Is looking at either canceling or rescheduling the July fourth city council meeting because because of the day. The the reason why I bring it up now um, is so that, as you know, a lot of the planning processes that go can be planned out. Months in advance, and we're scheduling meetings for their hearings and everything. Um, so we could easily uh, put that on for a cancellation and you can make that decision at a future meeting. And then we can plan around it very easily, but if we wait too long, then we're trying to schedule special meetings or other things and it can affect notice. So just when typically when it falls on a holiday like that, um, I would say we'd probably be fine. Um, uh, we'd recommend just canceling it if for some reason we're getting to a point we need, then we could schedule a special, but. Um, we'll put that on a future agenda, um, unless there was any concern about that.
I, we could, I know in the past, like we've done it the day after.
Yeah.
So the question could be as we get closer to it, we could have normal business, but we may not have public hearings and that that would have to be scheduled farther out. So if there are some things that need immediate attention, we could. Schedule for.
Right.
You know, either the fifth or sixth or whatever would work for all of us. Right.
And we're always, well, I, just so you know, we're always mindful of that, looking ahead so that we're not. Uh, unduly causing a delay for some project, right? And so um, if 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 we're making. Uh, we don't make that recommendation without making sure we're not doing something like that.
Right, what I'm saying is there's something else.
But if there is.
Had to cover then.
Yep.
We we just have to make adjustments to that.
Right, for a different night, yeah.
I'm good with canceling it if.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and say I won't be here July.
Right.
We won't have a quorum, put it that way, July.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you, Mike. With that, we're gonna move into our council reports and actions. I'm sure over the last two weeks, we've all had a lot going on. I don't know how much city related, so who, do we wanna start with Aaron since he's got the big screen?
Um, I don't have anything to report. I just have one question for you, Mike, uh, like at the basketball court, just curious of. What's what's our insurance? I would assume we put in an insurance claim in for that. What does that cost? And then also, what is the actual cost of fixing the fun little water leak we had?
You know, I don't. I don't know if I have those in front of me, but our insurance, we put in a claim with our insurance, but our insurance is. Working with the insurance of the cleaning company who caused the the to to actually cover that. And um. I know we got bids, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know what those are off the top of my head. I'm looking back to see if Shannon has those handy. He's looking, he's looking them up real quick, so I think we'll pull them up.
But are you saying that we're, are you saying that we're not gonna have any out of pocket on this? We're just. Temporary shutdown of services for the basketball court use.
Yeah, I know it hasn't all played out yet, so we gotta make sure that we're not paying a deductible, but I think. Um, at this point in time, it's it's being covered through through the other party's insurance, but working through our insurance, so there are. There are expenses that then flow through us, but then there's reimbursements that that come for that, so. Uh, on the spot, are you able to pull those up or should we send that later?
Can you hear that, Aaron?
So I'll repeat, I'll repeat that so you can hear there. Right now, we're working through, so of course, with any insurance claim, we have. Um, you know, there there was the initial response was they wanted to replace just the portion that was wet. When we were receiving bids on, well, one, we were not satisfied with that, um, because. The although it's two courts, it's the same court, and as you know, wood, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna age differently, it's gonna. So we were not very thrilled with having a a twelve or fourteen year old court, half of it, and then a brand new connected and trying to make that work. Um, next year, we also did have funds budgeted to resurface the entire court. I I think that was ten thousand. Or no, sorry, thirty, thirty thousand, and um, so we had planned to do that. So we pushed back that, no, I mean, if if most of that court is damaged, the whole court needs to be replaced. And we're working through if there could be some expenses in decisions we make. Based on what is the replaced amount from insurance and if we want to do anything in addition or not. Um, or if we have to cover some of those pieces to make it, make it full to where we where we want it. Um, but so far that's been uh, that's been a pretty good dialogue back and forth, and I think we've been, we've been heard uh, pretty well, but. Um, they actually, the demo went quick, very quick, and almost within one day, and then we are. Now looking at a much longer period before to put those in. Another, another thing that happened. Even though we were not happy with only replacing part of part of it, is when we were receiving quotes. Those companies were not interested in in doing part or partial, and you could imagine why, and um, as well as. Um, they don't build the uh, below the the wood, the court surface, the same depths. Today has that one was built at that point in time, and so there's a lot of, a lot of variables that we're working through, but. Um, Sersa, our insurance provider is is great, and they're they're and they're tough, and they, and then, and. You know, we are being very clear on what we would like, so. As we get through, we can continue to provide updates on where we're at with that, not just when it's done, but how that affects us financially.
Appreciate it. That's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
Actually, that that's, go ahead, man. I was gonna say, that actually brings in something. Are we equating loss of income because of usage? Obviously, that's happening in that claim as well, right?
We are taking that and. It's it's always difficult um, with that one. I mean, we will work through what we can with insurance, but it's difficult when when we have a. A membership that covers. I such a variety um, of things, but we are tracking it also. Man, this is going in and out on me, um, but we are, we are tracking it also from the standpoint of people that are. You know, I, I don't wanna pay my membership. The only reason my membership is to come play basketball. I don't, I don't, you know, we have some members, I don't care about the pool. I don't care about the fit fitness or the senior center or whatever it may be. It's just the courts and and we're, and we're working through that and 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 they are tracking those requests, and then we're making some decisions on. You know, uh, allow, obviously, anybody can change their membership at any point in time or get a. Um, not not be a member for a month and sign back up for another month.
Is that how that's being handled? That's recommendation?
Yeah, I I still need to get us the next update on that. I know the last one I had, they were just tracking to see. How many are concerned about that, how many requests they've gotten with that, and then make a determination on how to handle it, but we've always been pretty. Try to be pretty lenient in that we don't wanna. You know, it was similar when we were coming out of the closure and we had limited services. We were very lenient on, you know, okay, if you don't. You 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 know, you might get a refund or not have to pay during those months, which again is a choice at any point in time. I'm gonna kill, I'm gonna stop my membership for this period of time and. But you pay a month ahead, so that, so so we were looking at how many requests we were get for that, right? Cause you could, you could have paid for a month, and now you can't use one particular feature.
Looking at the photos, I can't tell the condition of the concrete subfloor. Is that pretty clean and it can still be used?
Yeah, yeah, they felt extremely confident on that. They did wanna make sure they they tested and weren't finding moisture in that. But they wanted to leave it for a period, for a period of time before even starting construction, which was during the holidays, gonna be hard to start construction anyway. To make sure that that dries, but they did. There are some pieces, some places where they tested that. One of the things we're most worried about is the area that didn't show moisture, but the way the moisture was spreading is any. Again, leaving some of the court, going back to that again, was mold and and you know, there was already mold. Uh, coming on some of the the very noticeable areas, and it's very difficult to tell how far that spread. You know, and and making sure that we're keeping that clean. So now it is down to, you know, it's just the concrete. The that's been, it looks funny because they, when it was built. You know, they lay that and then they have to smooth it out to make sure it's it's flat, and so there's different, you know, you'll see on those pictures. Um, it looks like different colors and things, but a lot of that's from the original smoothing it out, not necessarily.
It's not a floor that we can say, you know, we're not gonna build, be able to put in a court floor for two months, and we can go ahead and, you know, play basketball in it now.
No, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately. We thought about a a temporary roller rink, but I don't know if that.
So the other question then, does it affect any events coming up that we've got in the works?
You know, they were, they were looking at that and rescheduling. I know it it definitely was affects. I mean, we had an event that had to go to, ironically, it went to Redlands Middle School, was a basketball camp. Uh, Van Lanningham does during the um, Christmas break typically, I think this week actually, and uh. Um, he's working at Redland, so I think he just worked worked that out. Um, it's a, it's a contractor setup that we have. Um, there, it's affecting volleyball that would have started in there, so there there's some rearrangements that they're working through. I don't recall if there's any major event yet, but we're also trying to get the nail down the the full schedule, but they're looking out a few months. You know, so six to eight weeks to notify everybody and and rearrange as much as they can, but it does affect, I mean.
We have the health fair that comes up with the, with the.
Yeah.
We do. February.
Yeah, so we're trying to work, work through some of those, but.
February, those are big, those are big money.
I think that, I thought the chamber was re doing a different time.
I think it's April.
I think they they they're later this year. It usually is February, but I think they're doing it. I think it is April, right?
It's April fifteenth.
Yeah.
Own from memory.
Oh, it is, because that's my wife's birthday. I remember when I heard that.
That's pretty telling there, Mike.
I thought I could remind you of that important date. You won't forget it. All right.
Very unrelated, but.
Is that all on the gym floor? All right, Amy.
I have nothing to report. I had a very lovely two weeks with my family, so.
I can.
Nothing.
James?
Well, I got it, no.
Janine?
No, but I do wanna know, do you need to know if we're gonna come to the um, after hours event or no?
We don't, we will post it on your calendar, um, as since we are hosting it and, you know, whether or not. You have more than two or not, it it's fine, so.
But it'd be good to have a good showing at that one.
I'm, I'm planning on going, I just didn't know.
Great. We, we don't necessarily need RSVP, but I hope if if you're able to, it'd be great to have you there, at least. And as you know, with those, they're drop in, drop out, you don't necessarily have to be there.
Long speech, right?
I think we did away with those, wow. Oh.
Matthew, yeah.
I've got nothing.
All right. I don't have anything either on mine, so uh, with that, uh, we're gonna, our next item is, um, we've got a. Oh, we got an executive session here, uh, discussion and possible action to consider a motion to convene an executive session, and it's for our city manager review. So I need. No, we have to have a motion to go into executive session before we can actually.
I move, we go into executive session for discussion of possible action to consider a motion to convene an executive session. Regarding personnel, personnel issues under Colorado Vice Statute Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F. For the city manager's annual formal review with the city manager.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hancy.
Yes.
Counselor Breeman.
Yes.
Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, for Aaron, we're gonna take a five to seven minute break, and I think you have a separate link.
I, yeah, I do. Yeah, I'll come back, I'll come back in a few minutes and we'll get it going.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
We are now returned to the normal meeting. So we've had discussion on our city managers review. So do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we change. Thank you. That we update the city managers pay to one hundred and seventy five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars a year. And that we add in an amendment that he receives an additional month of severance. Or a month of severance per year that he's with us.
With a max.
With a max of a year severance.
Second.
All right, who we've got a first and a second, is there any other discussion?
Sorry, did that James, did you say starting the increase starting in twenty twenty four? In that motion?
It would be after a year of today.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right. Yeah, any other? Yes, any other discussion? All right, so um, I don't know who is next in line, do you know? No, you don't know. All right, you got a first and a second, all right. We'll start with aim, was it James? All right, then we'll start with Council Cry.
Hi.
Council Miller.
Yes.
Council Hansi.
Yes.
Council Bremen.
Yes.
Council Purser.
Yes.
Council Williams.
Hmm, yes.
All right, motion passes six zero.